I'm going to call the meeting to order in just a few minutes. Board members to the dais, please. Good afternoon. I'm going to ask that all present stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to thank you for attending this special board meeting for the Unified School District. This afternoon, we're going to be talking a little bit about San Diego State enrollment policy and how it affects our local students. This is a special meeting because this is very special to the Unified School District, especially our graduating seniors this year. Board members, we will start with public comments and then we'll do all rounds when we finish with the public testimony. We have a long list of speakers, so we'll get started. The first speaker is Assembly Member Marty Block.
Thank you, President Jackson, members of the board. Very pleased to be here today, very pleased that you're taking up this issue. I think the impact on the students that you graduate will be tremendous this year and in future years if San Diego State continues with the policy they're now espousing, and it makes tremendous sense to me that San Diego Unified is concerned about this because it's students you're serving. A couple of comments. First of all, the policy itself, I think, is misguided. Other CSU's around the state, with rare exception, give their local students not just priority, but allow all local students to meet minimum CSU requirements to enter. That puts our students at a disadvantage. They're, not only are they not first in line here, but they are not first in line in any of the other locations around the CSU. So I think this cuts off access to affordable, quality education. Let me say, San Diego State offers great education. That's not the issue. In fact, that's why it's so important that we allow our local students the same rights to get in as they've had. Second issue besides the policy itself is the timing of the announcement. Announce 10 days before the application period began just doesn't give students enough time to look at other options, to redirect their energies, and I would ask San Diego State to hold off, as you have in your comments, hold off at least one year in implementing this policy. And the third issue is the lack of public comment. I'm not telling you all anything you don't know, but at a hearing that I held of the Assembly Committee on K-16 Articulation, Affordability, and Access, we asked Representative of San Diego State who they contacted prior to the implementation of this policy. The answer was no one. There were no local educational organizations or community groups who were consulted, just informed after the fact. Hopefully, again, San Diego State will make a change, put things off for a year, and gain public input during that year. If they don't, several Assembly Members and myself are ready to enter legislation that would correct this situation, that would require public input for these kinds of decisions that impact large numbers of students. And there is, by the way, a petition up on my website right now for any of you or any folks who see this, martyblock.com. You can go and sign a petition to the legislature that will be handed to Chancellor Reed, again asking that this decision be put off for at least a year and that public input be obtained. Again, thank you all for all you do, tremendously difficult job, I know, and we all appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you for coming today. We appreciate your input. We'll now start with our speakers. The first is Pamela Sander, followed by Dr. Pat Washington, by Alan Acevedo, Louise Artegela. I'm okay this afternoon. Okay? Thank you. This is Pamela?
Thank you. I'm Pamela Sander. I'm a parent, a teacher at a middle school here in San Diego, and a resident of San Diego City. As a single parent, I'm very concerned in that I chose my residence and my work with the thought that I would be able to provide for my children or support them in their endeavor to complete a quality four-year degree. Therefore, I think it's, it would be very difficult for me as a San Diego teacher to provide room and board at an out-of-town location. San Diego State is a wonderful university, and when you have students who struggle through school, perhaps they graduate from the high school diploma program, as mine did, you will not have the ability to qualify sometimes for other four-year colleges, even if you could afford them. So as a parent, I think it's very important that the board keep all options open for all of our students. As a teacher at a middle school that's north of the 8 and south of the 78, we have many, many students whose lunches are subsidized by the government. These children are very talented, some are very motivated, some are very poor, and they realize, being on a lunch program, how can we expect them to even think of going to a university if they have to go out of city, out of town? It's kind of taken the wind out of the balloon, so to speak, because they'll say, gee, you're telling us to work hard and go to the university, but it's not possible. Thank you for your time.
Welcome, Dr. Pat Washington.
Good evening. President Sheila Jackson, board members, parents, community members, educators, all of you, Assembly Member Block, and representative from other elected officials. I'm here to basically thank you with all my heart and soul for taking this issue and making sure you do whatever is humanly possible to keep the only CSU campus that's in the backyards of many of our students and families open to our students and families. I listened only briefly to a KPBS program today where President Jackson was speaking, and I understood from that program that San Diego State is willing to offer a concession, and that concession being working with the San Diego Unified School District to have a program with this district that's similar to the Compact for Success that they have with Sweetwater. And I want to suggest very strongly that all of your efforts, if that's what you settle for, would be for not, because the Compact for Success with the Sweetwater School District is a good program, but it only reaches a few hundred students. And that program only reaches the students who are enrolled in Sweetwater from ninth grade through graduation in that program. They have a number of benefits that we want all of our students to have, but the reality is, you have a cluster of students in Sweetwater who have access to the compact. Then you have the majority of CSU-eligible Sweetwater students who are outside of that compact, who often don't even know it exists. And what we're looking at then is San Diego State University doing nothing other than what it's already doing, which is handpicking some of our students and leaving out most of our students who meet the CSU eligibility requirements. I agree with all of you. Two weeks before the admissions period for San Diego State to begin is far too late to make this kind of drastic change to admissions policy, and I urge you to keep your energy levels high.
Alan Acevedo. Alan? Louise Ortega. All right. Reverend Gerald Brown.
Good evening, Madam President, Vice President, and School Board Members. I will be reading a prepared statement. The United African-American Ministerial Action Council is a faith-based nonprofit organization committed to the construction of the beloved community of justice with equality access to opportunities in the pursuit of happiness, education, economic development, health, family stability, peace, and prosperity for all people. To this endeavor, we invite the participation of all people of goodwill and their resources to work collectively in making the beloved community a reality in the 21st century. Today, I stand before you to speak in support of calling for San Diego State University to rescind its recent decision to do away with its traditional and just practices of prioritizing admission for students in the city of San Diego. We also stand in solidarity with other progressive organizations and people who are working in the pursuit of educational justice. For the past 15 years, UAMIC has worked to improve the attainment and quality of equitable education for African-American children and other children of color. In order to achieve this lofty and indispensable goal, we have discovered that at least four things have to be accomplished. One, mobilizing and organizing the community to address issues in the public education arena. Two, researching promising models in educational intervention. Three, identifying and analyzing the systemic factors that have created a dismal public education system that negatively impact the students of color and the poor. And then four, creating a village ethos that reinforce the importance of education. San Diego President Stephen Webber's decision to change the policy, which guaranteed the enrollment of qualified students who live in the San Diego, San Diego University in the service area, is clearly a step in the wrong direction. His argument about the need for cuts, cuts that, again, will negatively impact the poor and most vulnerable among us. Am I all the time?
Yes, you are. Do your last sentence, please.
For African, the most vulnerable among us quite possibly for their lifetime gives the current dismal enrollment and graduate rate of African-American children from college is completely untenable and probably borders on racism practice. Thank you for your time. I have a statement for each and every one of you, and we will continue this discussion.
Thank you. William John Dovinsky. William John Dovinsky. Nikki Eddy. Nikki Eddy.
Hi. I didn't prepare anything, but I just got off of work. I'm at Castle Park High School. I teach AP and IB students. We have the great fortune to have the Compact for Success program, and so I wanted to, first of all, encourage you to stand behind that because it's a great program, but my students, predominantly Latino community, who are heavily impacted by SDSU's admission policy change. And, you know, if you could see the faces of my kids working so hard every day, most of them compete at a level I could never imagine doing in a second language, and they deserve an opportunity for people to stand up on the right side of education for them. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. John Fauci. John Fauci. Carlos Legretti.
Madam President, Mr. Vice President, and Board. It's very gratifying that you're taking up this issue today. The local community is up in arms over it, and many are represented here today. The decision to rescind the local admissions policy that has been in place for a number of years in this town and afforded a good education for those qualified needs to be changed, and it can only be changed with your help and our support behind you. I've taught many of these students at the community college level and university level and so forth, and feel that they really need this four-year education in this town and the cost level that their parents have been providing for for some years, and to change that as radically as has occurred, just suddenly recently, is a decision that's faulty, needs to be challenged, and people here are willing to stand behind you if you help us to do this. We definitely need to move in this new direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Legretti. Isidra Ortiz. Isidra Ortiz. Hafsha Mohammed. Hafsha Mohammed. Jose Rodriguez.
Sorry. Good afternoon. Thank you for inviting us over, Ms. Pat Washington. We really appreciate it. Now, when someone takes, when I take a look at the SDSU local guarantee of admissions policy, I obviously think that it's helped a number of individuals get through school and get to school. So one can only think or can only ponder who's behind it, who's is going to help and who's is going to hurt. Now, without any answers given to us, one can only speculate, and San Diego's changed quite a bit in the last 10 years. It has the highest low-income families ever. It has, the minority has now become the majority in San Diego, and SDS, or San Diego has become blue instead of red, this very recently. So a very simple answer that we received is that it's about the money. SDSU, SDSU's student body is comprised of 60% of out-of-the-region students. CSU recommends 60% of local students. So it's no secret that out-of-state students pay out-of-state tuition. They pay more money. It's also no secret that international students pay more money. So is it about the money? SDSU is a state-sponsored institution and should not be concerned about the amount of money it can produce. It should be concerned about the amount of students that it can educate. So I ask these, I ask you these questions. What is the purpose of local high schools if it's not to serve the locals? What is the purpose of community colleges if not to serve the community? And so what is the purpose of San Diego State University if it's not to serve San Diegans? Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin Chadel. Caitlin Chindell. Lachala Wilson. Lachala Wilson. Precious Jackson. Precious Jackson.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Precious Jackson Hubbard, and I am a teacher at Lincoln High School. Although I feel like I have a lot to say, I think that my presence here today speaks for itself. I'm a product of this district, born and raised and attended K through 12, and I came back to this district because I believed in public education and I believed in the possibilities for all of our children to have options when it's time to go on to post-secondary education. I'm appalled and I'm a little disheartened by the recent decisions that have been made to limit that access to our students. Not only are we tearing away their dreams, but we're tearing away their motivation to continue working hard K through 12. We tell them that if they work hard, that their hard work and their dedication will pay off, but the Cal State and UC systems, California is telling them something completely different. I believe that it takes a village to raise a child, but I don't believe in a village raising a child to go somewhere else. I believe in a village raising their child to come back home and to give back. And if California is not preparing students to come back to their own communities and go to school and teach and work in other fields and professions, then what is California telling our students? California is sending our students the wrong message, and I think that, that as a board and as a people, that we have a voice, and when we look at our students, they are the ones that in the future will be having your board seats. They are the ones that will be teaching in the classrooms and being the senators and so forth, and so what are we telling them about what they are doing right now? And I think that it's important that we all utilize our voice and make our children feel like they are worthy. Otherwise, they're going to take their wonderful gifts and talents to another country and give it to them. Thank you.
Thank you. You have Jenny Liu. Jenny Liu. Okay. Maria Ochoa. Maria Ochoa.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you to the board for holding this special meeting to address our concerns. My name is Maria Ochoa. I'm a member of ARE, the Association of Raza Educators, along with a member of being part of the Scholarship Committee, but I'm also a member of the Lincoln staff. And I'm here today to advocate for the students and what is right and what they deserve. Every year, we hold annual fundraisers to help achieve the goals of many deserving undocumented students. ARE has given over $15,000 in scholarships a year since we know they are denied financial assistance. San Diego State is closing the doors to hard-working students who don't have the privilege, like you and I, to attend whatever college they want. Unfortunately, they can't leave the city or get San Diego. For many of our local and undocumented students, San Diego State is all they got, and with the new admissions policy, those options no longer exist. For some reason, it's always the same students who get affected the most. We always get the crumbs. We continue to say that our children are our future, but what future do they hold if we continue to deny access to our local and undocumented students? We are, we are starting to sound very hypocritical. I'm here today to demand and claim what belongs to our local students, and that is the opportunity to attend college in San Diego, a place they call home. Therefore, it is extremely important for San Diego State University to restore the admissions policy now, and I just want to read a paragraph that one of the students wrote when he applied for our scholarship. "I am undocumented, and even though this is one of the hardest challenges I have ever taken in my whole life, I now know that no matter what my status is, I can still have the same opportunities as everyone else. I have suffered so much, starting from the day I had to adapt to a new city, the new people and new languages, but I think it has been worth it. Before, I didn't know what was available for me. I hated the fact that I was never going to be able to go to college or even work when I got a degree because no one inside, no one inside knew what really made me, how that made me feel. I wasn't worth anything. Now, everything has changed because I know that I can, now that I can go to college and work my way through getting a job, and this is what inspires me to apply to colleges as well as scholarships. That will help me because I know that my parents are not able to support me economically." So these are the students that we're turning down, hard-working students that deserve to go to their colleges in San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. Armini Lopez. Armini Lopez. Okay. Shekinah Shabez. Alex Verde. Alex Verlarade. Is that right? Verlarade? Okay. Nicholas Espino. Nicholas Espino.
I'm a parent at Lincoln High School and a member of ARE. Also, I started, I'm the president of Parents Committee for Social Justice. I can't believe that our jails are 300% overpopulated and our schools are having this problem. I mean, most businesses, you give discounts and you try to get more population, and you try to saturate it so you can make more money. These guys either don't take advantage of their economics classes, professors, or they're not asking anybody. Okay? So it's bad business. I don't know what they're doing in their position, and the kids are not benefiting from this. My kids, I want them to go to college, and when I look at the numbers, it makes no sense. You know? 2.0 before and now raising it in this crisis? I mean, are they on another planet? Because this is not, this is our schools. We built them. If they don't want to run them, we'll find a way to do it. Okay? We can manage ourselves, I can assure you. They can go build somewhere else and do their own thing. They can do the little private thing in the middle of the desert, wherever they want to go. The reason Californians are here is because we want to stay in California. The reason we live and work here is because this is what we want. This is where our kids are going to be. Somebody telling us to send them somewhere else, it's not the right thing to do. Okay? We want to grow where we're at, and if they don't understand that, because they lost this a long time ago, and the history's there. They've been changing it and making our kids suffer. I'm proud to be a Mexican. I'm proud to be of the history. This was my homeland, and it still is. I'm proud to be an American, and everybody that comes and works here and goes to school and works, because this is what we all do, and it makes no sense. You know, when I want to listen to the news and find out this guy's doing this. Thanks.
Welcome. Kiki Ochoa. Graham Forbes.
Good evening. My name's Graham Forbes, and I'm a research analyst with Unite Here Local 30, and we're the San Diego Hotel Workers Union, and we think that SDSU's attempt to increase admissions standards for local students is bad for working families, bad for our community, and bad for SDSU. For many hotel workers in San Diego, it's not an option to send your kid 300 or 400 miles away to attend school. Family is extremely important, and when you're working a minimum-wage job without health insurance, and the support and income that a student can provide is not something that can be sacrificed. These students still deserve access to a quality college education. We think this issue is really a referendum on what kind of community partner SDSU will be here in San Diego, and we think they should be encouraging local enrollment as an investment in our community and in San Diego, and these students will give back. Some of the best interns we've had at Unite Here have been kids who have grown up in San Diego, attend school at San Diego State, they know the politics, they know the community, and these are the kids who can really make a difference here, and to lose them would just be absolutely tragic. So we thank you for holding this meeting, and we hope you'll do everything you can to prevent this tragic decision from moving forward and being implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Legretti. Carlos Legretti? Yes. I need to get closer to the mic.
Thank you. I didn't have any prepared remarks. Somebody did mention that you had called my name, so here I am, but Carlos Legretti, 1359 Grove Street, San Diego, native San Diegan. All my education has been in San Diego Public Schools, San Diego, the Community College District, Mesa College, City College, SDSU alumni. After leaving San Diego State, I became director of the EOP program, so I know firsthand the admissions policies of the university. I do know that the policies that they are trying to implement now are detrimental to the students. I direct the Cesar Chavez Service Clubs. We have 15 club coordinators. Majority of them are community college students, who, all of them, are striving to get into an education of higher, learning such as San Diego State. This policy is going to be devastating to them. Also, I would say that I think this policy is culturally insensitive. There are many cultures that, that won't divide the family, that the education has to be here if it's a San Diego family. The education is in San Diego. There's no, there's no discussion of going to Riverside or going to Los Angeles or beyond, so I'm totally, totally against the policies of the San Diego State University. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Gregg.
I'm here on behalf of Assembly Member Mary Salas, who is unable to be here today. In the midst of economic uncertainty, limited financial aid, and double-digit unemployment, many students are choosing to attend community colleges and universities that are closer to home. Now more than ever, our local students need to be encouraged to apply for and pursue higher education. The suspension of the guaranteed admission policy is a step backward in providing an avenue for students to achieve their dreams of obtaining higher education. The guaranteed admissions process for local students has been a resounding success. Although the average percentage of local students at San Diego State University has been 37% over the past decade, more than half, 54%, of the 2008 freshman class were local students. Our local students need and deserve this access. Combined with the changes that will make the community college transfer process much more difficult, SDSU is raising barriers to the very students that have made this a rich, diverse, and quality institution. SDSU must keep its doors open to local students. Creating barriers for students who wish to attend, transfer to, or even return to San Diego State University are the worst possible options. It is imperative that San Diego State University reverse the suspension of the undergraduate policy that guarantees enrollments to students who reside in the local SDSU area. Also, on a personal note, I graduated from San Diego Unified Schools from SARA. I attended San Diego State, and I was a child of a single parent. It wasn't an option. San Diego State was where I got my education, and now I work for the state, and I'm appreciative of that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Taylor. Rebecca Taylor.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Taylor, and I'm an attorney with the Supportive Parents Information Network, SPIN, whose mission is to help low-income parents achieve self-sufficiency. Through our work, I encounter students who are both intelligent and motivated, but who have not received the same opportunities as those who grew up in wealthier households. They don't have the same level of financial stability as other students, yet those who complete college are just as well-trained and qualified as other graduates. The local student guaranteed admission program was one way of recognizing that the front door should be open to promising students who were qualified to complete their education with the same quality of achievement as other students, who advantages make them appear more competitive at the outset. Yet, CSDU's plan to alter these admission requirements would remove one of the most precious opportunities available to low-income students, a guaranteed, affordable, geographically accessible college education if they meet these eligibility requirements. Now that canceling this guarantee, the greatest impact will be felt by students who have no other choice than to attend a public local university. These students will then be unable to get past community college, and the obstacles to overcome a life of poverty are even greater. What's even worse is students who've been counting on this guarantee for years, students who were told if they work hard, if they achieve good grades, if they perform well in their SATs, they were told they were guaranteed a spot at SDSU. And now those students face the risk of not achieving a goal they were promised was attainable. It's been historically true that a greater number of low-income students who complete four-year colleges are more motivated and more directed toward community-serving goals than are other students who enter college with greater advantages. Our youth at SPIN may be very poor economically, but their dreams and desires to make a contribution to their families and community are just as important as young people with greater economic advantages. If SDSU closes this door, low-income students in San Diego will not be able to find another way out of poverty. So I urge you to take a public stand in favor of reinstating this guaranteed admission program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ofelia O'Quinn. I'm a board member of Supportive Parents Information Network. I'm also a parent of a student at SDSU. As a high school student who took part in the Compact for Success, which guaranteed her a spot on SDSU if she met the qualifications, we felt very happy and proud that she had the opportunity to attend a four-year college locally. I would not have been able to give her this opportunity because I'm a low-income parent, also single, and also disabled and unable to work. My daughter is a very bright student. She has a passion to become someone special. If she had not been able to attend SDSU for her bachelor's degree, I don't think she would have been able to attend a four-year college. The expenses are much greater if a child has to attend the university out of town. There are expenses for room board, travel, and food. There are medical expenses and other hidden expenses that you don't find out until your child leaves home. Even if there is a requirement for a student to live on campus the first year, they can return home subsequent years. Sometimes, this is the only financial advantage a low-income family has to give their children. Another obstacle a low-income student faces is that they need the moral support of their families, who understand where they came from and how far they have come. They can turn to their families when they feel pressured or like people don't understand them. They need someone who understands them and accepts them from who they are. SDSU's policy of closing out local income students by ending the guaranteed admission will end the success of students like my daughter, who struggle so hard and have so much to give. We need the Board of Education to take a public stand to reinstate the local student guaranteed admission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul Porter.
My name is Paul Porter. I am a City College student, a member of the prize scholarship program, and a club coordinator at the SISU Chavez Service Club. When I think about this particular matter, it infuriates me to the point I can't focus or write nothing down, so I don't have anything planned. I just feel offended, like it's a slap in the face, like they're telling me I'm not good enough to go to their school. Like, I feel that ever since I was around 12, I've grown up knowing that if I do this regiment, I'm guaranteed admission to the SDSU, four-year scholarship, I mean, four-year college. I can do my life and go on. But now that they're telling me I can't do it, I've already begun that process. What am I supposed to do now? Just come up with another way? Or get the money somehow? It's not right to tell somebody that they can't go to their school, that they would rather pick somebody from somewhere else to go to a school that's right up the street. Like, I don't have to spend too much money on room and board. If I go to SDSU, I can live at home. It's like a help, you know? And I feel that education is a help, especially if you're a state-funded school. You should want to help, not make profit. And it's just highly, like, it's infuriating. But, like, I know my peers, I used to tell my peers that I wanted to go to UC Berkeley, and they would look at me like I'm crazy and tell me, "You might as well just do the program and go to SDSU." But now I can't even do that, so what am I supposed to do? I just feel that if you guys turn this around, or at least bring it to their attention, what they're doing, because I don't believe they realize, maybe they're on cloud nine on the upper stratosphere, they don't understand what's going down in the District 8 and District 6, but maybe you guys can just make it apparent, and they can change their mind because this impacts too many people. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Ace Verde. Alan Ace Verde.
Hello, my name is Alan Ace Verde. I'm the president of the College Democrats at San Diego State University and a member of the Associated Students Council. We brought a group of our students here to speak on behalf of the students at our campus. And while there are varying perspectives on how this policy is going to affect the diversity of our campus, many of us find lots of concerns in the way that President Weber is handling our university. And while many of us understand that the allocation of the funds that he receives from the state are not under his control, we know that the policies that he implements are fully under his control, and this policy is something that he did not need to implement. It is akin to using a knife for a job that requires a better knife. This policy is not right for this campus, and it's not right for this university or this community. I graduated from Hilltop High School in the Sweetwater Union High School District and was able to attend San Diego State University under the Compact for Success program. And ever since eighth grade, I remember my teachers, my advisors, and counselors telling me that I had the opportunity to go to college if I worked hard. My parents didn't graduate from high school, and they didn't believe that I'd be able to go to university, regardless of how hard I worked, because they hadn't had that opportunity afforded to them. If I hadn't attended a university where, I mean, if I hadn't attended a high school where I was told every day that I had the opportunity to go to college, I wouldn't be here today. And this policy change turns that promise that the campus made to the community and that the high schools make to the students into a lie. To allow President Weber to change the admissions policy in a way that's going to detrimentally hurt local income students, minority students, is a travesty for this community. We need to be spending our resources on empowering and educating our local students, not on educating students out of state, out of the service area. Because what's going to happen in a generation when we need more educated workers here in our community and we're not able to find them? We need to start importing workers from out of the area and out of state, when there are plenty of people here willing to get an education to do the job right here. President Weber needs to understand that this community is against this policy, and that he needs to reverse it in order to stand up for the promises that that university has made to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan, your students that are here, they have slips. Do you want to call them up?
We're turning them in right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Gabriel Davis.
Good afternoon, and thank you for doing this. My name's Gabriel Davis. I am a native San Diegan. And I won't ever forget my father taking me as a small child to the Aztec football games and seeing Mani Manazuma blow on his conch shell and come out during halftime throwing the flaming spear and, you know, watching Marshall Fox. And that just blew my mind as a little kid, you know? I'm like, wow, someday I can go to that school. Someday, I'll be here as a student cheering on with my peers. And my father pushed me, as a young man, playing sports to focus on doing well in school and doing well in athletics, and taught me the value of priorities, and taught me the value of, you know, hey, let's focus on these things and get far in life, and then focus more attention on girls maybe later on. That was some good advice, now that I think about it, as I'm older. But really, what it breaks down to me is the fact that I did work hard. Went to Granite Hills High School, you know? I had to work extra hard going to tutoring in the morning to get the grades. I had to work extra hard after school, after going to practice, to get the grades. And I did get into San Diego State. And I'm happy and I'm proud to say I'm an alumnus of SDSU. And someday, I want to have children, and I'd like that my children have the same opportunities that I have. And I hear a lot of, you know, the other students in here who want to go to San Diego State, and I'm just like, wow, you know? I'm not that much older than them, and this opportunity might be taken away from them. I just, that doesn't sit well with me, because really, I've been taught to expand my mind, my consciousness, and my awareness, to go beyond, you know, discrimination, beyond skin color, to go beyond, you know, these prejudices that we set up. So really, we have to ask ourselves is, how are we, as enlightened individuals, making the appropriate decision by cutting access to local students? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Aquina Garcia. Aquina Garcia.
Madam President, thank you for your time. I am a person that is very, very concerned with the new changes that SDSU has been made to their local student guarantee. I think that it is very important that everybody stands up and make a difference and speaks out. Because the situation calls for it, because the budget calls for it, the decisions have been made. But cutting out our students should never be an option. I understand that the spaces are limited because of lack of funds. I understand that decisions had to be made to remove certain things. But how do you explain that to the high school students that have been working hard all their lives? It's not just the past four years. They've been working hard all their lives. They've been pushed and pushed and encouraged with the belief that they will have results and that they will have an opportunity and they will have a fighting chance. You hear about so many other students that fight for a long time to try to come from other states to go to SDSU. Well, as a San Diego native, our community should have priority, no matter what. Most high school students will be turned away, and they will be told to go to the community college. Well, I am here to tell you, as a community college student, that is not the answer either. Over 11,000 students just this past semester did not get a class. Waiting lists are preposterous. You're telling these high school students there will always be an answer. Now you're telling them, well, go to this other place. Well, I'm here to tell you that there will be a new room, because the community colleges, in order to accommodate SDSU's and San Marcos' decision, they have been cutting classes, and they will continue to cut classes. High school students have nowhere to go. I did not have this guarantee when I was growing up, and I'm having to struggle going through community college and facing my own struggles trying to get to SDSU. At least, I mean, I'm an adult, and I can handle it. High school students have no choice. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia Molina de Pic. Yes, you.
My name is Garcia Molina de Pic. I am a human relations commissioner for the city of San Diego. I have been a professional educator all my life. I was not born in the United States. I came here with a degree. However, I went to San Diego State University in order to get my teaching credentials. At the time that I attended San Diego State, there were less than 10,000 students. And in those days, in the graduate classes at San Diego State University, you could count the minority students, blacks and Latinos, with the ten fingers of your man. As a result of the civil rights movement, we were able to bring about many changes nationwide and also in San Diego. And I need to mention this, because one of the things that I did do, once I started my professional life in San Diego at Mesa College, was to make sure that our students had open doors everywhere they went. And San Diego State University is the way in which particularly minority students have access to higher education. And we pay the taxes that support this institution. And it is unfair that at the present time, the change of policy should be to bring those students that have profited by privilege, maybe privileged mind, but also by privileged economics, and that our own students who come from very hard-working families will not have an opportunity to compete. We need to keep, we need to retain the present admissions policy, because with this policy, we compensate and we give back to the community something that our students have learned from their own communities. Most of our people know what the reality is in the minority, people know what the reality is for us in our own communities. And we cannot continue to perpetuate an economic imbalance between the larger community and our own community. And by the way, the minority communities today are the majority of the population of San Diego.
Melissa Perez.
My name is Melissa Bettis, and I'm here to speak about my experience as a Compact for Success scholar, a first-generation college student, and a San Diego resident. I am currently attending the University of California, San Diego, as a sophomore. I graduated from Trula Vista Senior High School, which is a part of the Sweetwater Union High School District in 2008. As a Sweetwater Union High School student, I was a Compact for Success scholar. In all honesty, SDSU placed upper education in my future, and knowing I could attend a four-year institution empowered me, because it meant I would be a first-generation college student. When I graduated in 2008, I was a Compact for Success scholar, and although I opted to go to UCSD, SDSU was my gateway and my introduction to upper education. I recognize that SDSU has a long history of serving our San Diego community, and I know that it is well-known for being an excellent academic institution. I am aware of this because many of my high school classmates and friends are currently attending SDSU. For some of them, financial constraints did not allow them to leave the San Diego area in a and attend different universities. Therefore, the Combat for Success Program allowed them to matriculate at a four-year institution now that they're on their way to obtain their degrees. However, now SDSU plans on modifying its admission policies. And if my friends and classmates would have applied to SDSU two years later as a part of the class of 2013, they might not have had the same opportunity to matriculate. And it is heartbreaking to know that being born two years later should limit your opportunity to obtain a higher education. SDSU plans on changing its guidelines to admit only 37% of its incoming freshman class from the San Diego service area. Yes, I understand that they say that the local students are very competitive, that they could fare well against students outside of San Diego. However, a point system giving our youth priority does not help them when a higher percentage of students outside of the San Diego community are being admitted. Our youth has been reduced to numbers, which means that it is no longer about serving the community, but about crunching numbers. So where are the remaining 63% or are you supposed to go? Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, most of you I recognize. And the last time I was here, I was talking about a grandson at Morse, no, Roosevelt Junior High. And I told you that he said, that his teacher said she would not have to roll up her sleeves to teach black students and specifically, black boys, because they were not going any farther than the prison. I came here 10 times to speak. Nothing was ever done about that teacher. She decided to move from Morse. And the issue also is that the state college, was college when my son graduated, who is now a CPA, who they told in eighth grade, he didn't need any more math. So along with state changing its rules, you need to also know what the teachers at most of the inner-city schools, not the schools where the children are bussed, that's where they hear, there is a state university. It's not enough diversity among us. Oh, I forgot to say, I'm not a student and anybody's given institution, but I'm a student of life. And I really thought by now I would be able to cruise even though I wouldn't go on the ship, but maybe I could stay home. But there is more work now than it was when my five children were at Choyas, Gompers and Lincoln. And by the way, I have a grandson at the University of State, but they don't know his last name, his grandmother is a Meeschek. So perhaps they won't even bother Larry. He plays on the football team and they have been winning. But his name is Parker. But I am here to support whatever. And when somebody, I saw it in the news, it said state college, state university, has changed its ways. But I'm around, aren't you glad to see me?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Meeschek. We're always happy to see you, Ms. Meeschek. Christina Gonzalez. Christina Gonzalez.
I am a junior at Castle Park High School. I didn't have a speech prepared because I wanted this to be personal and for you to understand where I'm coming from. As part of the first generation in my family that's attending college, my dream was always to attend a university, a four-year university. I want to be the best I can be. And since I was in elementary school, I was already thinking about college. Not going to college is not an option for me and it was always said to me since I was little. I've always had the dream of maybe going out of state for college, but with my father passing away two years ago, that's not an option for me any longer. I have to stay close to home, help my mom, help my brothers, because it's obviously a tragedy to me and my family. I want to stay close to home. And with this new enrollment policy, it's basically telling me that I might not even be able to go to a college that I grew up around, that my cousins went to. And I look at my nieces, one who is an eighth grader at Castle Park Middle School, her also wanting to follow in my footsteps because as her aunt, I'm her role model. And I, it breaks my heart to have to tell her, the college that you want to go to, that I would want to go to too, might not even accept you. And for me, it's also heartbreaking that to see my mom tell me, I want you to go to San Diego State because you could stay close to me, but then go home and tell her they're changing their enrollment policy, I might not be accepted. It's also like a really hard thing to tell my mom who's already been through a lot. So I hope you stand by the right side in helping us and our students and just help us, I mean, help understand that this, this policy is not the right thing to do and it hurts us as a community and as San Diegans. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Miller. Don Miller. Followed by Zach Lemons.
My name's Don Miller. I'm a local high school teacher and I'm also a member of the Association of Raza Educators. A previous speaker stated that this policy borders on racism. I'm going to go ahead and call it what it is. It is a racist and classist policy and it would be ridiculous to claim that it's anything but. This policy favoring capitalistic greed instead of what is just and right for our community is just wrong. SDSU already has issues in terms of reflecting the community that it serves and a policy like this only furthers the lack of diversity already seen on the campus. It's also a slap in the face to the working-class families of this city who have poured millions of dollars in taxes into this, into this university and have allowed it to thrive only to have the favor returned by getting the door slammed in its face. Anyone who says that they support our students and our communities will stand against this elitist, I'm sorry, elitist, racist and unjust policy with firm conviction. Thank you.
Thank you. Zach Lemons.
I am Zach Lemons. I'm a sophomore at San Diego State. I'm also a member of the Associated Student Council. We, as an AS Council, represent the student body on the campus. We are the voice of the students and we speak for what they want. Last week, I think it was last week, we had a budget rally. Rallies are becoming more and more common on our school campus that students, our students are not happy with the policies they are being given. San Diego State is supposed to be a well-diverse, a well-educated group of students, primarily focused on the local area, which is what we're all about. I've heard several times today, the community colleges are for community students, San Diego State is for San Diegans. If we as San Diego students can't get in, then why are we here? I graduated from Masson High School in Claremont. I got in as a local student. I've spent the last year and a half becoming part of the university, becoming a true Aztec and I feel as if I am a true Aztec. But my friends from high school, my friends who are going to graduate soon, are they going to have the opportunity to be Aztecs? With this new policy, they might not. I grew up in a, I grew up in a family that didn't give me the opportunity to extend my education and I didn't have a family, a mother to take me to school, I didn't have a father to tell me right from wrong. I grew up without parents to guide me. And so I was self-motivated to become a better student, to get through high school, to have a 4.0 GPA and get myself into the university. But with these new policies, my friends who are working equally as hard might not have that chance. I understand why we're doing it, but last week at the rally, when I saw hundreds of students in front of Manchester Hall, our administrative building, unhappy, yelling out, screaming that we aren't doing the policies we should have, the money we should have, that shows to me that if we as students aren't happy, then who is happy here? Who does deserve this? Next, on the 16th, we have another rally. Associated Students is backing it. I, as a Student Affairs Commissioner, I represent the students and I want to see some changes that will benefit all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. David Vallado, followed by Kayla Andrews.
President Jackson, Superintendent Kova and members of the San Diego Unified School District Board. My name is David Vallado Lee and I am the President and CEO of the Parent Institute for Quality Education and National Parent Engagement Program. I want to commend you for taking the immediate position when the policy change happened at SDSU and making the announcement that you were not in agreement with it and asking SDSU to change that policy. And I compliment you again for holding hearings or being, considering the fact that you're going to hold hearings. Because our phone is ringing off the hook by parents who are asking, why are they shutting the door to my child? And we've been through PICA promoting college education, telling them that it's their right and getting them prepared. I have an agreement with the 23 CSU campuses and I give a parent at our graduations a certificate that says, when your child graduates from high school and meets all the college admission requirements, a place is reserved for them in one of the 23 campuses. Unfortunately, now for low-income students, leaving San Diego is not an option. And so I ask you, and I'm a San Diego State graduate, and so I'm asking you to please pass this recommendation. I also sit on the National Cradle to Prison Pipeline for Latino and African-American youth. Right now, there's 580,000 African-American males in our prison system. There's only 44,000 coming out of a college. There's 280,000 Latino males in our prison system with only 30,000 coming out of a college. Our youth have a greater chance of being locked up than being admitted into a university. So we have to be about educating our community to let them know. And I think these hearings that would be televised would give out the information that our community deserves to have as they prepare their children for the future. So I thank you for considering this as a motion tonight and I hope that you pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla Andrews, followed by Espinol Ramon. Carla, Kayla, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Kayla Andrews and I am a student at Lincoln. I'm Vice President of ARSO, African Revolutionary Student Organization. And first of all, I would like to say I think that this policy is absolutely catastrophic and it makes it much rigorous than it has to be for us to get into college, particularly minorities. This policy is definitely classist and they obviously haven't thought, they haven't, obviously haven't thought it out about the negative impacts that, that it would have on the less fortunate community. It's like, people are telling us that, oh, you have all these great opportunities. They put it in front of our faces and say, work as hard as you can to get it and it'll happen, but it's not going to happen because they've made up this new policy. It's like having your dream and your goal snatched right from under you. So I honestly don't think that it's right and I don't want to go to SDSU. Honestly, I want to go to UC Berkeley because I want something better for myself. If they don't want me there, I don't have to be there. It's other opportunities for other people and we can do different things, but for them to say that they want to take somebody else from a different country or different state or whatever, then that's wrong too because that's, I think it's basically because of money. They're getting paid more money if they're coming from out of state and they'd rather not take a San Diegan. And that's just absolutely wrong to me, so, yeah.
Mrs. Superintendent Kova, Madam President, member of the board. My name is Ramon Espina, I'm a teacher at Rosa Parks Elementary School. I stand here today to reaffirm my strong support for the resolution which this board passed unanimously on October the 10th, 2009, and to support this recommendation that you are pushing forward tonight. I stand here today to demand from Dr. Weber in San Diego State University immediately reinstatement of our local student open admission policy. Madam President, I am the product of an open admission policy similar to the one that, which San Diego State University has in place up to now. Without such open admission policy, I would have, never had the opportunity to go to a four-year university and to get a bachelor's degree and to become a teacher. My bachelor's degree was not just a BA. I was the first of 11 brothers and sister, 11 brothers and sisters to honor my family with such an accomplishment. And that is precisely what is at stake for tens of thousands of Latino students. As a taxpayer from the state public institution, San Diego State must not be allowed to close perhaps the only window opportunity for so many Latino youngsters, other students of color and other working-class students. Every day, I tell my students, work hard, study hard so that you can go to university. I will continue to do that, but the message that San Diego State is sending to our community is not inspiring, is not encouraging. And this district is doing the best it can to prepare the students so that they can go to San Diego State. And that must not be allowed to happen. We must not allow San Diego State to deny qualified local students the opportunity to honor their families and to attain the kind of education which could be their only passport to building a better future and to contribute to the economic and scientific viability of our state, city and county. Thank you very much for doing what you're doing.
Thank you. I'm going to call some names that were listed on the agenda earlier to speak that were not here when we started at four and probably came in after then. Kiki Ochoa, are you, did you come in? Okay. Shuniko Shabes. Okay.
Thank you so much, Board, for having this hearing. We totally appreciate all the things that you've done, especially the statement and the solidarity that you're showing for our community. I'm going to read a couple pieces of students who are local students, who are undocumented students, because I'm here also as a member of the Association of Raza Educators, which we give scholarships to undocumented students. And these are a couple things that they wrote in their essays for their scholarship application last year. Growing up with a single mom has not been easy, but the experiences and the problems that I've gone through when my dad died have helped me gain many values. For example, having to be independent at such a young age has taught me to appreciate what I have. To explain, most students view school as a game, but I view it as a privilege and I am determined to make the best of my education. This is another applicant. There are two kinds of people in this world, the ones who fight for what they want and the ones who sit down waiting for the opportunities to come and watching the fighters accomplish their goals. In this point in my life, I consider myself a fighter. Even though I'm an undocumented student, that has not stopped me from trying to be a successful person. I have taken as many opportunities as possible as I could. This has had a big influence on my life. I have never given up and the fact that I'm an undocumented person is not going to be an obstacle for me to see my dreams come true. I read these because San Diego State's new policy, or elimination of their policy, can be another obstacle to prevent these students from, from attending and achieving their goals and dreams. These students do not have the luxury to go to UC Berkeley. They don't have the luxury of going to UCLA. And they're hoping and praying that the organizations like God and the Board of Ed, you know, do whatever it takes in order for them to have that opportunity. Please, you know, I implore, because as an avid teacher as well, you know, we're constantly telling our students to work hard and unfortunately, some of our students can't get the best GPA because of the circumstances that they have to face every day in the community and their families. So please, we implore you to do whatever you can in order to make sure that San Diego State do what we rightfully deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Did Alex Faraday come in? Okay.
Hello, Board. Just a correction, my name's Sakina, not Shuniga. You know, I've been getting that since like elementary. But I just want to point out that like San Diego State is the institution of higher education that could be easily provided to us through like transportation, like on the bus or on the trolley because as people who come from a lower socioeconomic status, you know, all of us can't afford cars, you know? of us can't afford cars, you know, it's easy to get there with the transportation that San Diego provides to us. The majority of the students who do apply to San Diego State and who are students of color are financially burdened, are emotionally burdened sometimes, and don't have the opportunity to leave the household because they do have those sort of responsibilities. And because they do face all those struggles, college should not be another obstacle that they have to face. If they worked hard in high school, then college, I'm not saying college should be easy because it's hard, but you know, it shouldn't be one of those obstacles that they have to face on top of the issues that they have in their house. And I just want to point out this analogy. It's almost like a child who's being abused by their mother or by their father and they're being treated horribly and stuff like that, but it's not their fault. And in a way, like San Diego State is being like that abusive mother or abusive father towards the child, but it's not the child's fault. And they're treating them like local students are the issue when they're not the issue because they didn't do anything. They're just trying to pursue that higher education. And then proving that students are not the issue and that proving that money related to students is not the issue is that I learned some facts about today in my advocacy class. And on the same day that they created this policy that's going to cut down the amount of local students is that they purchased another apartment complex for students that can come in out of state and that cost like $26 million. And so how are you not going to have money to bring in these out-of-state students and not have money to give us? You know, I personally plan on going to an out-of-state college because I'm fortunate enough to be able to leave the household because I do have a stable environment, but not everybody has that. Students should be able to go to their local, it sounds funny saying "local" college, you know, because you used to say "local high school," but they should have the opportunity to do that and for them to take it away from us, that's just not right. So expecting them to do the right thing.[710.12][710.12](APPLAUSE).
Okay, did Luis Ortega come in? Luis Ortega? William Davoski? Davinsky, I'm sorry. Isidro Ortiz? Hafa Mohamed? Caitlin Sandell? Okay, Caitlin.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Sandell and I'm a junior at San Diego State University. I'm originally from the Bay Area and I am privileged enough to be able to go away to school. That, however, is not the same story for every student. Not every student who is capable of college is able to jet-set away. The Local Student Guarantee preserves spots for those who are not able to leave the area for whatever reason to receive their college education. Along with preserving spots for students who are not able to travel, the Local Student Guarantee adds balance to the inequitable quality of public education. This guarantee gives students a greater chance to achieve a better life for themselves as well as their families. How is one supposed to pick themselves up by their bootstraps when some boots are given to those without their straps? It is necessary to keep the Local Student Guarantee and not allow this institutional discrimination to happen. The passing of the new admission policies is going to have an infinite effect on us. SDSU should help facilitate the health and betterment of their community instead of add to the hindrance of it. Thank you.
Thank you.[808.32][808.32](APPLAUSE). DeChalla Wilson? Okay. Jenny Liu? Jenny Liu?[817.23][817.23](APPLAUSE).
Hi, my name is Jenny Liu. I teach at Lincoln High School. I'm an avid teacher and a geometry teacher there and I wasn't planning to speak, but my biggest concern with this policy is that it is affecting students now who are currently trying to enroll into San Diego State. The open enrollment started November 1st and ends November 30th and the students who decided that they wanted to go to San Diego State for the last four years had done everything they were supposed to do, everything that they were told would guarantee them to get into state, and now they can't even get in. So my biggest issue right now is that the students who are currently trying to enroll for San Diego State can't even meet the expectations that were said that they could have met a month ago. Thank you.
Thank you.[873.54][873.54](APPLAUSE). Harmony Lopez? Lindberg?
Thank you, Board members, for having this forum. I think it's a good thing for the community to participate in. And thanks to all the parents and students who've come forward and spoken. I think this issue has resonated quite strongly with the community. And some of the points that were touched on about the issue of whether or not San Diego State is more interested in getting higher fees rather than serving the local community, I think that issue needs to be investigated some more. And one young lady just brought up the issue of them investing in an apartment complex. How does that also play into that decision? And the other thing is that the local community, MTS and SADAC, they've invested a lot of money into putting a trolley line going to the community, going to San Diego State. So that's an incentive and makes it easier for a lot of local students to attend college. So why putting in that infrastructure as something that would make it easier for San Diego students to get there and then decrease the admission percentage? So we need to continue as a community to press that San Diego State continue their policy and not reduce admission. And thank you for the Board members for having the courage to hold these hearings. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.[996.23][996.23](APPLAUSE). Hope Sebas? Hope Sebas? Z there, so Hope is. Followed by Kristy Parker? Okay.
Hello, my name is Hope and thank you for letting me be here today.
Your last name, Hope?
Sebas. And I'm a junior at Lincoln High School. I just wanted to say that many of us, such as myself, who are minorities, value such an opportunity to come here. It's horrible that now as students who should receive first choice to come to our school and our community are now being denied. What's occurring right now is unjust. I don't truly believe that budget cuts is the reason as to why this is happening. As Sakina just mentioned, the $20 million spent for the apartments could have been put to better uses, such as applying to the problem. I don't understand why we waste money on such things as that when we could be putting the money to having our students in our community still being allowed to come here. The real issue seen here is how the minority is seen as incompetent and a threat to the academic quality of SDSU when we are not. The only thing that I see that makes out-of-state students have more opportunities to come here is the fact that they have more money than we do. Thank you.
Thank you.[1090.12][1090.12](APPLAUSE). Krista Parker?
Hello, can you hear me? Okay. Kind of nervous, so bear with me here. I am an SDSU student. I'm a sophomore and I sit on the External Affairs Board, so I'm part of AS, Associated Students. And although I didn't graduate in the San Diego School District, I want you guys to know that I have met some amazing students who have come from this area and the submissions policy. And without it, I wouldn't have had the opportunity to do so. And I want everyone in the community and on the board to know that even though I didn't graduate from this school district, I've become a part of this community and I feel for all the students who are being affected by it. And I want everyone to know that we, as Associated Students, are doing everything that we can to make sure that this admissions policy is looked at and changed. So I just wanted you guys to know that. So thank you.[1151.01][1151.01](APPLAUSE).
Lindsay Sweeney? Lindsay Sweeney? And Kevin? Okay, together, okay.
I'm Kevin Yabez. I am ASP President at Miramesa High School.
And I'm Lindsay Sweeney. I'm Commissioner of Community Involvement for ASP. So at our school, more than 185 seniors alone got accepted to SDSU last year. So we're a pretty big number going into SDSU. It's a very important option for us. SDSU is a very important option for us as college seekers. So we're both applying to college right now. And when we look for a college, one of the most important things we consider is whether or not we can pay for it. So there are so many costs involved when you're going to college. There's the classes themselves, the books, and of course, room and board. So how far away a college is from home is always a major issue to consider. Being able to pay for room and board can be a major determining factor.
And just like Lindsay said, we're both applying to colleges. I just applied to San Diego State this past weekend and I got my confirmation email just today, but that's just a confirmation that SDSU has received my application, not that I will get in. So studies show that students who go to four-year colleges are more goal-oriented and more likely to continue on in school. And especially those students that are being leaders. If you check our ASP shirts, they say, "Today's students, tomorrow's leaders." And if we don't have an opportunity, such as San Diego State, to further our education, we may not be able to be full leaders in the community as we wish to be. Students apply for four-year colleges show that they have motivation. Students may not always have a lot of money or perfect grades, but any student who works hard and does well should have the right to go to college and better themselves regardless of where they come from or any other reason.
SDSU may be the only chance for low-income, hard-working San Diego students. SDSU has always been a diverse school, but honestly, what group of these diverse students will this affect most? The low-income, the minorities who need it most?
Thank you.
Thank you.[1326.88][1326.88](APPLAUSE). Our last two speakers are Rachel Barley, I think it is, or Bailey, and Cynthia Lopez. Oh, so we have two more. Okay. Delay my last.[1347.12][1347.12](LAUGHING).
Hello, my name is Rachel Bailey. Unlike many others that are with me, I am a student at San Diego State University. This is my second year and I'm also on the External Affairs Board and Associated Students. I was born and raised in San Diego. I came from the service area. I attended Kearney High School. And initially, San Diego State was my last choice. I absolutely did not want to go to that college. It just so happened that my senior year in high school, I was diagnosed with a congenital heart defect and two months later, I underwent open-heart surgery. Luckily for me, San Diego State was my only option. I'm sure you guys would understand how much I went through and the recovery process, so the next year, it's been a year and a half now for me. So the following year, I had so many appointments, so many doctors to see. Luckily for me, I was able to attend San Diego State University. I needed to be close to home. I needed to be with my family. I needed to be where all my specialists were. If I did not have that opportunity, there's a great possibility that I would not be able to pursue a post-secondary education. And like many students and people that have been born and raised in San Diego, San Diego State is their only option. And I am so grateful for the policies that have been implemented thus far. And it is heartbreaking to me to notice that this can possibly change. And other students like me, or certain students that may feel that this is their only option, that opportunity can be taken away from them. And I really do hope that you guys all stand forth and help to make sure that this does not happen. Like I said, for many students and for many other people like me, San Diego State is our only option. Thank you for your time.[1443.54][1443.54](APPLAUSE).
Cindy Lopez? Followed by Crystal Sedano and Carrie Christie.
Hello, my name is Cindy Lopez and I'm a freshman at San Diego State. And I'm also on the External Affairs Board. Exactly one year ago, I was applying to SDSU in hopes to be the first person in my family to attend college. My parents did not have the same opportunity as me to attend college. And this February, when I received my acceptance letter, which was on my birthday, I cried because I knew that I was worthy to attend a university and get higher education. And there are many other local minorities as me who are eligible and because of this new admission policy, they will not be able to attend SDSU in order to get their education that they have worked so hard for. And this new admission policy should not be an obstacle for those students. Thank you.[1504.21][1504.21](APPLAUSE).
Kristo and Carrie.
Hi, let me see. I'm a transfer student from Grossmont College and I'm also now a San Diego State University student.
Your name, please.
Oh, Crystal Sedano. I thought you said it. My apologies. Thank you for having this open forum, by the way, for students and for members of the public to speak and share their opinions and thoughts. So I am a San Diego State student now. I'm a transfer student from Grossmont College. I got into San Diego State as a result of the TAG Agreement, which is the Transfer Admission Guarantee. I am a member also of the External Affairs Board with the Associated Students because I am interested and concerned with transfer students, also interested in high school students being able to be admitted to San Diego State and all CSUs. And so there was a couple things that I wanted to point out. First of all, the apartment complex, because I just did some checking, like, did we really spend $26 million on an apartment house? And what I discovered was that actually Aztec Shops put the $26 million to buy the apartment house complex and Aztec Shops is not overseen by the Associated Students or anybody, you know, it's a business, so they can do with what they please with that profit. Apparently, they wanted to buy an apartment house, so they did. That's not something that came out of the budget from, you know, like campus-wide budget. The other thing that I wanted to address was that students, I know for myself that the requirements for me transferring were actually lower than out-of-service students. And there's a difference between out-of-state and out-of-service. Out-of-service means that you don't live in the area. There are certain zip codes that they cover. And so students who live out-of-state, they have a required higher GPA than in-service students' area. Had I been an out-of-state or an out-of-service student, I would not have been admitted. So I'm a single mom, also working toward, you know, trying to make myself a better life. And I really do feel for college students or for high school students. I don't believe that they are being discriminated against in any way, shape, or form. These requirements are coming out of the state chancellor's office. They are being required to reduce their admission by 10%. It's not SDSU's decision to do that. It's coming out of the state chancellor's office as a result of the budget. And so if students don't understand that, then I don't know what else to say, but that's more of the accurate information. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1677.25][1677.25](APPLAUSE). Carrie Christie?
Hi, my name's Carrie Christie. I am a mother of two children that attend school in the school district, Clay Elementary and Lewis Middle. I'm also a PTA Board Member at Clay Elementary, as well as a school site parent representative. I'm also an SDSU student. I'm a junior. I just transferred from Grossmont College. I also benefited from the TAG Guarantee. I guess I'm just concerned on many levels. As you can see, I have a foot in every school in this area. Anyways, I'm just concerned that higher education is not only for the elite, that it should be available for all those who wish to obtain it. Education should not become a pipe dream for local San Diego students. There's many students like me who are single parents that don't come from money, that don't have a huge voice, but they're looking to do whatever they can to better their lives and the better their lives of their family. I just want to point out that the community colleges are filling up and the programs are disappearing every day. Anyways, so if SDSU isn't opening up its arms to all of our local students, it's not just as simple as them just going on, moving over to the community colleges for a couple of years because all the great programs that I was able to use at Grossmont College, many of them don't even exist anymore. I just, I thank you guys for your hard work and I hope that you keep in mind that San Diego is really looking to you to make this happen for us. We need you. Thank you.
Thank you.[1799.83][1799.83](APPLAUSE). Thank you. That concludes our public testimony part. Board members, we'll start with your comments. Dr. Evans, please.
Thank you, I will be very brief, because the purpose of this meeting that we're having today really is to hear your voices, and this is, besides being televised, is being recorded, and it is going to be presented to the officials at San Diego State University, as well as your written testimonies, so make sure that you've turned in written testimonies so we can present this in our packet. The whole point, we have all spoken out in our resolution that we've already passed about why we feel so strongly about this issue. We wanted to have that backed up with the people who are most affected. And I'm particularly pleased that so many students from San Diego State University who have either benefited from this or have seen the value of having this have come to testify about that too. A couple of things of misinformation keep getting out there. Some people believe that this has something to do with not meeting the requirements, letting in people to college that do not meet the requirements. This is, the local service guarantee obviously is for everyone who has met the minimum requirements of San Diego State. We received another letter today from Dr. Weber, and again, they're not addressing the issue about lowering the local percentage. They go back to the historic 10-year average of 37%, but in reality, what's happened is we have improved each year in terms of our students being prepared for college, so that last year, we were up to 54%. So, the issue is they're trying to go from 54% down to 37%, and they will not answer that question. So, at this point, the next steps, we will present this information to San Diego State. It's very important that we get the word out that everyone continue applying to San Diego State, because November 30th is the deadline, and this may not be resolved until after the deadline, so we need to have everybody have their applications in, so that we can get it worked out in the meantime. This is really an opportunity. San Diego State has learned, I think, through this, how important the community is, how important it is to work with the community. There are those who've said we maybe shouldn't be commenting on what San Diego State is doing as a public institution. As community members, we have every right to comment on what is happening at San Diego State University, just as San Diego State University has every right to comment on how we are preparing our students for college. So, I'm very happy that you've all been here, we're participating in this together. This is real community involvement, and I appreciate all of your help. Thank you very much.
This is a perfect example of the state educational train wreck. And while I wish I had power over San Diego State, I could, I already passed and voted for the resolution. I basically think that this is a good avenue for us to say what we think, but I don't think it's going to change much unless they pay attention. Now, Marty was here and he's gone, but I think the legislature made some decisions about the K-12 education priorities. And I don't think anyone here would be willing to say, "Let's give up some of the K-12 money to accomplish the goals that you're all speaking in favor of." So, I think it's a perfect example of a lack of resources, a lack of legislative will, and a lack of willingness to raise taxes to support education statewide. And that you are just part of, I call, the victims of what the state has done to education. I will not say that I'm opposing any of the things you said, but I will say as a practical matter, that I did hear misinformation, although one lady was careful to point out that the dorms are not being built out of operating funds. And I also heard other kinds of things like I hear when I'm talking about my own budget that are based on, I'll call it, the impact, the emotional impact, but the cuts will have. Yes, there will be cuts in the state. Yes, they will adversely affect people, a lot of them, including the kids that are applying. I have to be honest about this. We are making cuts, we're going to have to make cuts this year on this year's budget. Stephen Weber had lost funds that he didn't hear about in time to make the early admission judgments. So, he had to make some decision, and I'm not going to blame him for having to do what he has to do. What I'm going to say is I think it's unfortunate that they had to do it, and that the state forced him to make those kind of unfortunate decisions based on survival. But I certainly don't want to have the money come out of our budget to solve his problems. And I think that's what most of you would like to see happen. Because there's only a finite amount of money in the state for education. And the legislature decided that a certain amount of it would go to K-12, and a certain amount of it would go to the colleges. That's the truth. Now then, they can't tax, we can't tax, and so, Mr. Weber, or Dr. Weber, and his people have to make some hard budget decisions. This was probably the wrong one. Maybe they should have cut out their doctoral program. I don't think so, but that's one of their options. They made some decisions, very hard ones, and I have to say I'm sorry that they had to make them, just like I'm sorry I'm going to have to make some more for this district in the coming months. But we can't be unfair about the fact that the state has decided to turn their back on education and that you and we are going to suffer for it. That's it. I'm in favor of our resolution, I don't see how we can change what the decision is at San Diego State. That's just my view.
Mrs. Nakamura, please.
I join my colleagues in thanking you for coming and speaking. It is important, I think that a community speak out and that the stories are told about what this means. However, having made these questions, you know, having them come in front of our own board as we face these budget cuts, I'm sympathetic to San Diego State. It is, they've taken a 10% cut in their salaries for their faculty. They have made cuts in other areas. It's really, really tough time. The one concern that I have about this is that it's 30 days' notice. It's almost like a bad cellphone contract that says the terms of this agreement are subject to change without notice. 30 days, as these kids are filing, is not enough notice. It's simply not enough notice. Everyone understands that we're making adjustments. Everyone understands that we're all trying to change, to adjust to this. But it's not enough notice, and I don't think this is the population. I'm very sympathetic to the statements of the local students, of people having to stay at home and staying close to home for a variety of reasons, largely economic. I am a San Diego State graduate myself. I was a daughter of a single parent myself, and worked three jobs when I was at San Diego State in order to, you know, put myself through college and pay for all of that. It's tough, it's not easy, it can be done. But I think having the rug cut out from underneath you 30 days before is going to really make a lot of students just give up. And I don't want you to do that. More than anything else, I can't remember, I think it was Mr. Ochoa, someone said that, you know, "Please continue to apply," because we are still, particularly if you're really in a competitive position, "Don't give up on our local university in attending it because of this." Try and understand the situation, and I hope people will continue to put their applications in. If, you know, I believe that a lot of the kids will still be admitted. I think that our kids are competitive. But I also challenge the Board of Education here, up here, as we make our own budget cuts in this coming year, I am very concerned about the things that we're going to cut out, things that have already been eliminated through our budget that make our own students less competitive. There are extracurricular activities that our students participate in that are, you know, being dropped out of the budget, that they're just simply not going to happen this year. Things that go on our college application process. And I challenge us, as we look at our own budgets, you know, that we think about what we can do, what can we do to make our students in San Diego even more competitive? Because I think there's a lot that we can do in that regard. However, in this particular instance, at this state and time, it really is, to me, it is about the 30 days. It's not fair, it's not right, and I thank you for coming down here today.
Ms. Barrera, please.
Yeah, I thank everybody for coming here and sharing your stories and your thoughts in a public forum. I don't believe, we certainly haven't heard tonight, and I don't believe there's anybody here in attendance that represents the administration at San Diego State. That's disturbing. Assemblymember Block talked about the fact that when this policy was rolled out, there was no communication with the community, with the public. We're hearing tonight from students at our, from our school district, teachers from our school district, parents from our school district, students at San Diego State, faculty at San Diego State, people from the community. I can't understand why the administration at San Diego State refuses to engage with the community around these decisions. We understand tough decisions. We face, at least every month, people who come and talk to us, or we go out to schools, talk to people who disagree with the decisions that we make or have concerns about the decisions that we make. That's called democracy. San Diego State's a public institution. I saw a quote in KPBS's story that an administrator from San Diego State described this hearing tonight as chest bumping, counterproductive chest bumping, chest thumping. Well, what I heard tonight was very sincere, very important testimony from people who were directly affected from this policy. So, you know, the administration of San Diego State is being accused of being arrogant and elitist. I hope that they're not, but their actions certainly would justify that characterization by not coming out and not having a dialogue with the community. And let's be clear about a couple of things Dr. Evans alluded to. I don't believe that anybody on this board, and I haven't heard anybody, you know, that's here tonight, that doesn't understand that San Diego State has budget, has a budget crisis, faces the same budget crisis that our school district does. This issue's not about the budget. There's nobody, nobody on our board is questioning San Diego State's decision to cap its enrollment. We understand that, we understand that there's budget realities. They made a decision that they couldn't admit as many students as they normally do. The issue is, with the enrollments that you are admitting for next year, why aren't you beginning with students who are qualified from our local community? That's, that's the issue. We, like Ms. Nakamura and Mr. DeBeck have talked about, we've got budget choices ourselves, we face the same crisis, absolutely, from the state, but that doesn't let us off the hook from making our own decisions. And it doesn't let San Diego State administration off the hook either. You're making a decision beyond your budget crisis to change the makeup of your local university that's going to have a negative impact on local students, primarily low-income, local students of color. That's wrong. And number two, the idea that our students from this district and from the local community are somehow not qualified to succeed at San Diego State, that has been implied in comments that we've heard from the administration. The implication is that people, students who are coming in from out of town, are more qualified and more likely to succeed in college than our local students. Well, number one, anybody who listens to the students that we've heard tonight understands how determined and hard-working our students are. Number two, the data shows that local students succeed at least at the rate and often are more successful than students who come in from out of town. That's not surprising to me, because when you give somebody who's been denied opportunities for their entire life a real shot at something, people are going to work really hard and are going to succeed. San Diego State, the administration needs to understand that what you're hearing from this community, whether it's from students, parents, students at your university, faculty, the state legislature, the school board, what you're hearing is this community saying, "You are a critical institution to our community. You represent hope, you represent opportunity. We believe in you as an institution because of the work that you've done to earn our belief over a number of decades." The current administration of San Diego State, you are stewards of a public institution that has done right by this community for decades, and you have a choice right now to continue to do right for future generations. Make the right choice.
Kobe, did you want to make any comments? I'm sorry.
Thank you, President Jackson. I couldn't have said it more eloquently than what Ms. Barrera and the other members have said.
Thank you. This meeting tonight is a very important meeting, and I'm glad I didn't read those comments before the meeting. This isn't about chest thumping, this is about the future of San Diego. Many of our households have been affected by this economic crisis. And what we do when we're affected, we don't necessarily move away, but we all tend to come home. Some of us are sharing our home with family members, because we can't afford to live separate anymore. What people do during economic crisis is invest in themselves and in their families. San Diego State policy is not saying that. But San Diego State, the city, has invested in you. As was mentioned earlier, the trolley station that was put there, that was a city investment. All of our schools have been working hard for students to go to university, that's an investment. The participation in your local activities, that's an investment. So, what happens is when we invest, when it becomes hard times, the time then is to reinvest in the community. We cannot afford, and if, and understanding that, yes, they have to trim by a certain percentage. But even looking at, we had 54% of local students attending last year. If you trimmed it by 10%, that's not down to 37%. What we're asking San Diego State to do is to reconsider how they have defined the local attendance at their university. It is extremely important that we invest in San Diego. If our own state university is not willing to invest in our students, who will? And we hear that from, we hear that, because people say, "If you don't want to invest in yourself, who is going to?" If the state university is going to turn its back on local students, it makes it more difficult for them, yes. But we want them also to understand that we're not going to stop, we're not going to stop. We will take this message to President Weber and his executive staff. I hope that they have been listening to this. Public comment is very, very, very important. And I think tonight, we have heard a lot of comment from across all stakeholder groups. And so, I want to thank again everyone for coming. I want to thank everyone for sharing, and this is a critical time for us. And I don't want to leave here tonight not knowing how critical a time this is for San Diego. The investment in our students has to be a real investment, not only from us. We have our challenges, but from the universities and from the business community as well. During this time, in order for us to survive as a city, as a city, everybody, everyone has to be willing to do their part, and that includes San Diego State University. Thank you for your time. Our next meeting is tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock, I think, 8:30. 8:30, thank you.